At the end of that, invocation by this person, threads to the flag be used truly. Roll call, proof of its amendments, amends. There are a couple of items on the minutes that we need to look at. I can tell you, I think it's on the, there's one on about the third page on item number G. Change that sixteen to fourteen. And it's written from the last page. Go down to one where it says ordinances, number two. Motion by James Buckmaster, change that James to Ken Buckmaster. And that's all I have, as far as the minutes. I didn't cover the rest a lot. All right, we're going to work getting your trouble. That's all I've got, and changes in the minutes. At this point, I don't have any announcements. I will tell you that the meeting in Gatlinburg is next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You decided to go, you need to do that. We got the amendments to the agenda, none at this point. Uh, citizens' response, nothing to support. Still, we have a representative test for Cleveland. Uh, mayor's report, I'm sure you, if you anything you want to say, do not murder.
I'm just going to update on the streetscape project. They did request some more funding and the basis of that was caused when they refigured the numbers to submit it to the federal government for funding. The cost of construction has gone up, so we had to put in a little bit more to make our twenty percent match on that. So we had to put in another, it's twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars for that. And for the landfill, we did submit our corrective action work plan a day early. It was submitted on May fourteenth, it was due May fifteenth. So it is in to Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation and they'll be reviewing it and give us their feedback on it. So we've got both of those in. And other than that, I'm just going to give kind of a very, very brief summary of going to the basic economic development course. They throw a lot of things at you in four days and you can't possibly cover it in, you know, five, ten minutes. I'm going to be very, very brief and kind of hit the highlights, but there are a lot of things they suggested that I'm going to bring to the commission's attention and things we need to do going forward. That I've seen another, that they showed other communities doing, particularly one that was even smaller than us, something that didn't be very successful. So I think it was very, very good. I'm really glad I attended that and I think there's a lot of positive things we have that we can take advantage of as we move forward to in that direction.
Do you have a touch or lift to property tax freeze issue?
Okay. I had been contacted by a citizen over the weekend, and this is somebody I talked to while I was campaigning, and I've heard this from other people, that wanted us to consider a property tax freeze that the county can do under state statute, which is essentially would freeze their property tax rate at the current amount due, not the tax rate, but the actual dollar amount that would be due on their property. And so I brought that to Mr. Ford's attention. He and I talked about it. He thought it'd be good to bring it to the budget finance committee. The budget finance has asked it. I do more research in coordination with the county trustee and Mr. Bellar, who Smith County has this in place. And we're going to cooperate with them, try to get more information so we know exactly what the impacts of doing that would be. And I will say, looking at the census data, about fourteen point eight percent of our population is age sixty-five or older, which you have to be sixty-five or older to qualify. And currently, there is a state program that has a reimbursement, it doesn't freeze your taxes, it reimburses them for part of those property taxes due. And currently, we have about a hundred and sixty-one county residents that take advantage of that program. And the amount of rebate or reimbursement to them is around forty-three to forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. You know, I might just comment the budget finance. Back many years ago, when I looked at, when executive it was then, I was in the home of a lot of elderly people. Two or three things that I really noticed. Number one, they're very lonely. They don't want you to leave. The next thing, well, they always complain, please don't waste my taxes. So if we could do something to help those people that's living on fixed income, I think we've done a big favor for our county. Let's move on. After that, we'll have committee reports, active business. We will acknowledge certificate of achievements, the valedictorian and the celebratory. They're sisters, by the way. Sarah Henry is the valedictorian and Marie is the celebratory. And we'll go from that to certificate of appreciation to Justin Freeman, who's been our student representative now this year. And we have certificate of appreciation from him.
Is still staying in office?
Oh, yeah. But he's probably going to be going to school too. It's set up to be done our next, uh, regular court meeting on Tuesday. Then we go to ordinances. Uh, ordinance one seventy-nine, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. Partial rezoned nine-one, R-one. Dixon Springs, that's the public hearing on that. And that's, if you look in the packets, that's Mark Merriman, all of them. He's trying to save the whole place there and he wants to cut an acre off. This was passed in the first reading, when we'll have a public hearing here. And then we'll have the second reading, partial rezonating on that. Again, the ordinance one seventy-seven, twenty-nineteen oh seven, reorganizing the fire department. That'll be a roll call. We've already had a public hearing, but I guess if we're going to motion the second one in, if you're going to speak tonight, then we're hearing your comments again. But we won't have a public hearing on that. Budget amendments?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I do have the county commission, at the last county commission meeting, you asked me to put together a kind of a budget proposal of what this may cost. I did put one together. I'm sure some of the members of the emergency services committee may want to speak to that. I don't know if they're going to do it here at the other committee meeting, but I did print out, and this is something that asked me to do a breakout of what I thought the actual costs related in my proposal being the merger. A lot of my proposal cost is really just combining current line items, either from current budget or the budget request of the fire and rescue department. I did not address the EMS because at the time, we had not spoken to the comptroller's office, and so I did not want to include them in there with the possibility of co-mingling fund and all those things. But Mr. Beatty had said he thought really no increasing cost to EMS would be nine thousand dollars to compensate for them sitting down there at the, at the facility. So I did include that in this, but I just added in, Mr. Beatty said it'd be nine thousand dollars, so I included that. In the second hand, I'm going to give you his more detailed proposal, really like to say, breaking down what the cost on. Now, I will apologize in advance to some of the members of the, excuse, all the members of the emergency services committee. After the meeting was over, Mr. Gregory, the guy that came up and pointed out to me that I had made a mathematical error in my calculations. Apparently, when I was figuring out the cost of the SCBA gear, instead of typing in seven thousand, I typed in seven hundred when I was doing the calculation. And so that threw my numbers off a little bit. But this will give you the, this will give you the breakdown. If you have any impressions on that, I can answer those. Is there any county commissioners, Mr. Brickman?
Yes, sir.
And is there anyone else who would like to have one? And this next handout, like I said, is going to be actually one of them being, just look like a proposed budget. Now, again, I had to base this on assumptions, but just trying to figure out what I thought impacts may be. And I will apologize, not everybody's going to get a nice color of one, I had to print through a different copy machine. Really, the biggest cost differentials is really at the bottom, it should be the last line item. And that's equipment. And this is based on a meeting with Chief Beeler, Chief Beatty, Mr. Buckmaster, and Mark Carman. And really, the cost of the merger, I've got in here that twenty sets of turnout gear, that coming from. If you put the fire and rescue squad together and make them cross train, Mark Carman said you're going to require thirteen more sets of turnout gear for the thirteen rescue squad members who don't currently have it. And the price I was given by Mr. Beeler was there's a price range of about twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred. So you try to overestimate your expenditure, so I went to the high side and used just the thirteen for the rescue squad members. And you times that by twenty-seven hundred, it gives you thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. The SCBA sets, so that's the breathing apparatus that they wear along, as well as the harness and everything, puts it on. If I'm misidentifying that or misspeaking on that, you can feel free to correct me. And they initially had said, Mr. Beeler said he thought that was part four, but in the discussions, it was pointed out that the fire department has increased in membership, so they could really just, they could use two right now as it sits without even merging or anything else. They would like to have two more. So I only attributed two additional ones to the merger bringing in the fire, the rescue squad. And those are twenty, thirty-five hundred dollars apiece, so two to thirty-five hundred, that gives you seven thousand dollars. And for spare bottles for the SCBA, again, I only assumed two because of fire squad, rescue, excuse me, fire department will require two more backup bottles if they get two more of the SCBA sets. So I only included two as a result of the merger. So sixteen hundred times two is thirty-two hundred, and that gives you a total of forty-five thousand, three hundred. And then on the utilities, I used the EMS's current budget for what their utility costs are, since that is a facility staff twenty-four seven. The only other one we have that's staff twenty-four seven in the jail, and that'd be greatly skewed because of the inmate population. So I used the EMS numbers. I will say, they're not hitting all these numbers. There might be one or two where they're getting close to the line, but I thought that'd give us a nice cushion as far as budget purposes. And this third column, if you're looking at this last one, this third column, I'm sorry, this is just kind of the way my brain works, I'll put it in here. You'll see it says fire slash rescue. So if you're looking at the numbers, the number on the left side of the slash is the fire's current budget. The one on the right is the rescue. And then the in parentheses, that's tolling the two together. And you'll see some of those, one of the line items, water and sewer, there is a provision in the fire department's budget, but there is no correlating provision in the rescue squad's budget. So I just used eight hundred, just total for the water department, excuse me. The fire department, I just used the eight hundred number for that. And the custodial supplies, I used the current EMS budget, but I added in a hundred because right now, our current budget year, our custodial supplies are coming in a little high. So I just added that by two hundred. EMS is currently at a thousand, so I just added two hundred on that to compensate for any rise in cost. Again, I just figured out the differential, so if you go through the differences, you'll figure that out. But I think your utilities and custodial supplies over what we're currently looking at will do about thirty-seven hundred. So if you total forty-five thousand, three hundred plus thirty-seven hundred, that gives you forty-nine thousand dollars. And then at the bottom, this was kind of an afterthought that I did put it in, where Mr. Beatty estimated EMS cost would be about nine thousand dollars to have the personnel sitting down there twenty-four seven. I just added that in, so that's fifty-eight thousand dollars. One of the things that the emergency services committee was curious on was what did the comptroller's office say? At that time, I hadn't had a chance to speak with them. We tried calling, but they set up an appointment, the time to call, which was yesterday at two o'clock. We did speak to them. We can't use the funds that are in one eighteen as it is set up. If we're going to combine the fire and rescue and EMS into one service, we would have to take those out and put them in a new one-twenty-seven fund and put those all together. So you can do it, but you have to do it that particular way. There was another thing that wasn't part of this, but I'll go ahead and address it since it's part of the shares. We did also ask them about if we can use EMS funds to fund maybe some dispatchers, and they said they thought we could, and there's a couple of different ways we can do that. But as far as the merger, if we're going to put them all together, we have to put them in a one-twenty-seven fund. Yes, sir?
I get the thirty-seven hundred dollars to house the fire hall twenty-four sevens, go raise utilities. So I get that part. Forty-five thousand dollars, the merger could happen without that forty-five thousand dollars. That's more of a wish list. But if you look at this, the late person might go, it's going to cost us forty-nine thousand more dollars to do this merger, which is not factually true. Because that forty-five thousand is just a wish list for turnout gear, so it's not necessary for the merger.
The first meeting, I went to talking about the emergency services, that you're going to combine them, we're going to train you, and you were going to have fire and rescue personnel. That's what I based it on. I will also point out that once you combine these, the day-to-day operation is my purview. I want them to cross train, and we're going to combine fire and rescue, why would I not have everybody fire and rescue trained? Now, if you don't want to do that, you can just, instead of having fire and rescue division, you have fire division, rescue division, and this division. And then you don't have a combination there. But my problem with doing it, if you grandfather people in, okay, you're going to have somebody starts at the fire department or rescue squad, then start last week, their grandfathered in for the next twenty years, they don't have to be cross trained. That doesn't, to me, that doesn't make any sense. And so I based it on, I hate to call it the worst case scenario, but if you brought everybody in and cross trained, this is what I think it would cost.
Actually, as we looked at that, that becomes an improvement if you get thirteen, it would actually become, because they're still volunteers.
Right. Well, you're also keep in mind that if you've got nineteen current firefighters, and then you add the twenty rescue squad on top of it, and they are both cross trained to fire and rescue, we now have thirty-nine personnel that can do it.
Really good.
I would like to see if there's a way to maybe do, do a survey and do shifts, so you could have somebody come in at night. Some, these, these two guys work Monday, these two guys work Tuesday, and kind of swap off like that. They've done that in another volunteer fire department, they did a survey of their membership and said, okay, we have enough people with varying schedules, we can actually do shifts. I don't know that we can, but that's just something we can check into, and maybe that may help some of the situation as well.
So on that thought, just because I want to ask a kind of question. Your turnout gear, life expectancy, lifespan, what we have years, about how long, you say that you're?
The what?
The ten years?
That expiration date is ten years. We typically get eight to ten out of them. So.
And right now, where we are, we looked at the stuff the other night, we went down the fire hall, just fire people alone, just fire department alone. What are you projecting, I think Mr. Hunter had to sit down and list of what your immediate needs will be, or how close are you to the end time on a lot of the bottles and uniform, or the turnout gear?
All of the gear is fifteen to eighteen, except for four sets that are in use now. Those have to be replaced, we're actually in the process of quote note right now.
So we need, we need? How many turnout gears?
Four sets.
Four sets for sure.
And that's on this budget.
Just on this bill, not on that bill.
Yeah.
So it's not, so if you did this, like he's talking about, in, in the best case scenario, if you, I'm saying the best case, well, you've got thirteen new members, that's best. You may not get that little target for that, that's a, you call that a one-time, non-recurring expenditure, but you're always going to have a certain amount that you're going to be rolling in and stuff that you're expecting to roll out.
We're right now at.
Just like a football team that buys helmets, you've got a ten-year life expectancy. You buy some each year, go, you know some, or go out, likely.
Thanks, Chris.
It's your.
Five years up.
Well, it's ten, it's five years or more, it's ten years on life expectancy, on the line.
See, yeah, we're doing four to six sets a year, a year, just to stay, stay out of it. We do have some that, that get tore up, as I explained the other day, when they go down to the fire steel valve bucket, we can tear up a good set of fire gear in two days down there.
Maybe we talk about those rubber boots, or some of the other ones.
It's leather boots, it's more expensive, but they last a lot longer.
Yeah. So non-recurring would be at a maximum, those thirteen. But you have to think long-term wise, you're going to be replenishing a certain percentage, and when you increase your amount of volunteers, on this scenario, you would increase that number some in a yearly basis because you're replenishing at a higher rate. Makes sense? So you need that gear now?
I'll get you all those.
We need four sets.
It's in our budget.
David, you had your hand up?
Yes. We got here two, two bottles or two air pack set, those are the hardest and everything. The other night, we, they only said you had eight, and that, we were on, we said that that was, y'all said that was not, or everybody said that was not enough. And I don't know, I don't think ten would be enough either. So I'd say that that needs to be a whole lot higher number. Somewhere down the road, it may not be right at this point, but somewhere down the road, they need more bottles than ten, than ten. Because one of them, I believe, is that was not working perfectly, couldn't tell how much area you had in unless somebody run around back and look, and use gauge front, so gauge didn't work. So I just thought two would be, more, more than two need to be a whole lot, so they would have more parts and bottles than just ten.
And I will say, again, this came out of the meeting, I had it with Beatty and Beeler, and these are the numbers that came out. So I based it on the numbers that came out at our meeting, plus the dollar amounts that I was giving is what these cost, and plugged those in. So that's where the, the only thing I really had, me sitting down and going through it, was looking at the other line items like electricity and all those kind of things. And a lot of those, to be honest with you, are either, one of them had a line item and the other one didn't, so I just used the existing line item, or I took their two budget requests and put them together, since I figured if that's what takes the fund separately, and that's what takes the fund separately, I just combined the two together. So really, the only outstanding thing gets down to the other equipment that may be necessary once you first combine. Everything else is pretty much going to be recurring expenses, and I think it'll probably be either the amount I got, or hopefully a little bit less, because they try to overbudget, as I said, you know, overestimate your expenditures.
David?
How do we change the one eighteen or one-twenty-seven? What do we do?
I imagine, however you set it up initially, and that's something, as I said, we just got that information, and so we're going to see how we do it. I imagine it'd be an ordinance, just like everything else, maybe it'll coincide when the next budget year begins, if you're going to combine them, you start your next budget year, and there is no more one eighteen, it all goes into one-twenty-seven. And that includes the fire protection, everything from the one-on-one, rescue squad from the one-on-one, the fire protection from the one-away, and then the one-eighteen.
That's what we did a couple of years ago, when we created the fund for the ambulance service to sit on its own. Because once upon a time, the ambulance service budget was part of one-on-one, we didn't really know how it was functioning, we wanted to see that. And we gave it three hundred something thousand, I think three fifty is what we originally put in, I haven't, of course, before your time, but I think it's three fifty, it's up to six hundred something thousand dollars now. But when we separated that into the one-eighteen fund, it originally had not started operation yet, so that's why that thing's grown, like it's soon to grow, because prior to that time, you know, it costs us a lot of money to have the ambulance service just on its own. That was our concern, we need to see what those figures look like. It's to be noted that also, what you don't see in this, that the committee had talked about, was the fact that when Matt was talking about the nine members that would like to be a part of this, that would be at the fire hall for immediate response time. Steve Cross was here from Nashville and said, now, look, Matt, you need to buy your fire gear out of your budget. You need that, whether to put it together or not, you have the ability to do that. So there's no need for his now to have additional fire gear, because he said he had the funding to do that out of his own budget. Of course, if you put it all together, and you have a one-twenty-seven, it's going to mitigate it anyway.
And I didn't include the nine.
Right, that's right.
Personal in this, this is just fire and rescue.
You just said, you'd have the nine thousand dollars of additional money.
The nine thousand, I used that amount from, because that's what Director Beatty had said that being nine thousand, and he didn't, that was just nine thousand dollars for labor costs. He didn't address the turnout gear or anything. So that's what I based the nine thousand on, that's the number he gave up.
So the thirteen, and I'm a proponent of cross training, I agree a hundred percent on that. Thirteen would be the EMS personnel that need to cross train?
No, it's the rescue squad personnel. The rescue squad personnel that would be coming over, that, there are twenty rescue squad members, he said thirteen don't have turnout gear, the rest of them may serve on fire departments or somewhere, or bought their own gear. He said, so there are thirteen that would need the turnout gear, so that's where the number thirteen came from. And that's from the rescue squad, not the ambulance service.
What if some rescue squad didn't want to be cross trained? I know your purview, but in previous meetings, we also had the purview that if you had a firefighter, they want to be cross trained to medical, they wouldn't have to. So where does that cross training requirement, mandatory, not mandatory, for who? Not for who?
I believe when the first meeting came out, I answered that question, I was answering it, there will be a transition period that you go through that.
Right.
And to kind of see how it works out. So that's what I, I'm going off of what I was told at our first meeting, that's what I based all this on.
Mr. Dick?
I have a question, two of them. One, you said you're going to have two, or two, twenty-four hour, or two people for twenty-four hours, then off twenty-four, you have two to begin?
Well, I, I think I said, you correct me if I'm wrong, I was talking, was that when I was talking about the, trying to do shifts for the volunteers? I don't know, there was another volunteer fire department in Tennessee that did a survey of their membership, because they were trying to improve the ISO rating. They did a survey of their membership, and they found out that they have varying schedules, so they could actually staff their volunteer fire department twenty-four seven, just creating a shift schedule, just like if you went to work and you had a shift schedule. I don't know that it'd apply here, I really don't think it would. Last time I, I asked, a lot of people worked during the day, and there was no personnel available for the day. But we could maybe staff it during the night using a shift schedule like that, if we have thirty-nine total members. That'd make it a lot easier to have it staffed that way. If, again, you have to do a survey and see if that is a viable option. I'm not saying we come in and force that, if it is a viable option, but there's, you have to do surveys and make sure that it can be done. But I was just basing that on that other volunteer fire department.
Okay, the second question is, if you're going to have a fire chief to be full-time, and then you're going to have a emergency medical at full-time, now, what happened to it on emergency, if it gets sick, and they on vacation, who will replace them?
Well, for the emergency, the ambulance service or their personnel, it'll work just like it does right now. Because they've got enough people there, that I guess they bring somebody in over time. However, Director Beatty schedules it, it'll work just like it does now.
To go back to, to look at the back, what you was talking about a second ago, Steve Cross was missing one of our meetings, I didn't write it down. Some of the fire departments, they did ask their members, their volunteers to come in overnight. He knew which ones they were, he talked about that at one of our meetings. So we probably could ask him and say, who were those people?
And I, I apologize, I can't remember the, I got it out of a Gulf of newspaper when I did a search, and it really talks about, the whole article about how did they improve the ISO rating, and the fire chief said this is the things we did. And that seemed to have the biggest impact when they did the survey and said, we can actually staff it twenty-four seven. But I apologize, I don't remember the name of the fire department.
The nine thousand dollars that O P said it, he could put out this thing, the forty-five thousand, if it goes that way, where would that funding come from? Basically, yeah, where would it come from, where would the forty-five thousand dollars, how would it be funded, if that was the actual cost?
To be honest, if you're going in this budget, I have no idea, first. Even if we go with the slimmer, if we go with the stingy budget that I prefer to go with, we're looking at a one-point-three-million-dollar deficit. So if you combine with the one-twenty, if you combine them all in one-twenty-seven, you can pull it out of fund bonds, but once you combine these, we have a deficit in that fund as well. But they do have a pretty healthy fund balance, to be honest with you.
They do, and then you're talking about that, and I mean, that's not a reoccurring cost, forty?
No, and a lot of that, you've got to remember, the pumper tank, the pumper truck is in this too, so that, that inflates the number, that's a one-time expense. That's why you look at it, it's so high, because you've got two eighty-five for the pumper truck that's coming on. Because I made this as if this was a budget submission, a budget request, based on if you combine it right now, and we're going into budget time, this is what I think the proposal would look like. And then the committee asked me if I could break out what I thought the merger costs were, and this is what I think is what's most directly linked to it. There's other things, as I said, I've got, I give you an example. Legal notices regarding the court calls. There was provision in the fire service, the fire department's budget, there was no provision in the rescue squad, so I just lifted up what the fire department's was. A lot of these things, I tried to put notations next to it. It's either one department's request, and the other one didn't have a correlating line item, or they had a budget request, and I put the two together, since you're going to take the staff for both of them and put them together. I just took their budget request and add them together, and that gave me that number. I did cut a couple of things here and there, but it was no more than a couple of hundred dollars, looking at current spending trends, and that would be reflected on the right side. If you go and look, there's some numbers that's lower on the right-hand column. That's because I looked at the current spending, I said, well, you can actually cut this a little bit. It's a few hundred dollars here and there, so I don't think there's a, a great variation in a lot of this, there's not a whole lot of variation once you combine the two budgets together. And as I said, this does not include EMS, so the EMS budget. And as I said, this does not include EMS, so the EMS budget would then come in with their expenses, but I did not do that because we had not talked to the controller's office. And I didn't want to speculate on something because in, in my business, every time I heard the term code meaning, there was somebody with a badge coming around. So I didn't, I didn't get into that at all.
Mr. June?
So based on this, if, say next year, lean budget, I mean, this is the next year after we combine and we did the initial costs for the turnout here. And we slash budgets completely and nothing is available to buy any equipment, the only cost according to this of combining the merger for that next year would be thirty-seven hundred dollars.
If you don't, if you don't have, if you don't, well, they, they include a normal line item in there for if somebody goes into a, a building and they get cut on their suit or something like that. There is a, a normal amount that they request for budget, they don't always spend it. But as far as what I think, this is directly, I think these are foreseeable costs, I think these are certain. After that, this should be just like an initial spike to staff your people that don't have the equipment they need. Then after that, I foresee it dropping until you hit a normal one four. This is just an initial, we got everybody together, we're going to staff, we're going to equip them with what they need, that's where you see the drop. And then after that, it should kind of plateau out with your normal recurring expenses and budget, that's everything else does. I think the same thing happened with the ambulance service when they first did it.
That's correct.
Next items I've been asked these questions, for the building expansion, again, wish list, not really a requirement, correct? Or is there a statute out there saying that because we're gonna be twenty-four seven now, we have to have these?
Well, if you're gonna be twenty-four seven, you don't currently have a shower facility, you don't have a kitchen, you don't have an eating bedroom big enough to have thirty-nine members need in it, you don't have a kitchen. These are just two items you looked at in the future. Are you gonna keep the ambulance service up there with a building that's aging and continuing maintenance cost? Or eventually are you gonna try to, wanna pan that facility, phase that one out, bring them all over to the newer facility? But in the, the most expedient thing with your new thirty-five members from the rescue squad, that would begin to be on the right-hand side that you expanded. If you're gonna have somebody there twenty-four seven, sleeping corners, kitchen, more office space because there's only one office inside the building and then showers. And that'd be on the north side of the building, and when they built it, they didn't allow expansion space on the north side in between the fire hall and Broadway apartments. Plus, I set an additional three vehicle base because the rescue squad does have its own equipment and vehicles and whatnot, so obviously if you expand it to what we currently have, so that I could have a spare footage number. And then I times that by a hundred and twenty-five, which Evan White with Mid-Ten Engineering and the Fed said in their experience, a hundred and twenty-five is a very good number for expanding an existing building. So I plugged that in and that's what gave them the six twelve, I just took a hundred and twenty-five times the spare footage and that gave them the six twelve. I think that would be the most likely if you're gonna combine them and have them all in the same building at the same time, a twenty-four seven staffing, I would think you would need to include some of these facilities. So that's where I got that number. The other one is if you're gonna put everything down there, I would assume this building, to be honest with you, it is kind of small, if you're gonna put all them together, if you double the size of it, that gave you more spare footage, times a hundred and twenty-five and that's where the, the higher number came up.
Right, I mean, it's eventually gonna come, but it's not required to have the merger.
And that's why I didn't put it in this budget year because that's going in, I mean, you got things, we got a jail that's probably gonna have to be built because ours is getting very old and out of date. We got other things that's coming up, that's why I said this is what I think it would be using expenses at this time. But I didn't attribute it to any particular year because I don't know when that could be done.
And actually, when we talk about this in committee, you know, that might be something, might be a bond referendum, we'll look at what people decide they want or not.
It could be, it could be.
When the real tax ends, that's random, you could.
There's a lot of things we're gonna.
It could be that, I'm scouring gov.gov, grants.gov and everything I can to see if I can find grants and all, all these different things. So it could be, this is also what I think the costs are gonna be, regardless how it's paid for, this is what I think the costs are gonna be. We do have options we can look at, I'm just saying this is what I think the cost will be.
But this could be several years down the road, it's not.
The expansion of the fire hall could be several years down the road. Yeah, that, that's why I said I didn't attribute it to this year in particular either because I can't foresee when that's gonna be done. I just think if that is gonna be necessary, using today's current numbers, that's what I think the cost will be. But just like the construction of the, the streetscape project three years ago, it was a lot cheaper than it is now. We could, this could be the high point of construction, we could be here three years from now and construction has nosedived and all the costs have gone down, this number would go down.
The reason I ask that is because I've had questions going, so if the merger's gonna cost us seven hundred and fifteen thousand, merger's gonna cost us six hundred and twelve, merger's gonna cost five fifteen, I kept trying to explain, no, like tanker truck and everything else in there. But that's the question I'm getting from the public is, this is what the merger's gonna cost, what's that gonna do to my taxes? Well, that's not what the merger's gonna cost, that's kind of like more of a wish list, that we need to eventually expand the fire hall.
And when I came to emergency service Monday night, I tried to be as specific as possible and say, I'm not saying this is what we're gonna be paying come August. I'm saying if this is a possibility, this is what I think it would be using the current spare footage and the current construction amount or per square foot, to what it would be right now. And then these numbers, really the only thing, as I said, the only thing that really pops out that I think would be attributable to merger is the breakout sheet I gave you. And then after that, everything upset to that last seven ninety object code is pretty much gonna be reoccurring expenses. And that should be borrowing, rising cost, anything like that, looking at what we're looking at now, this should be pretty much where you're at as far as your reoccurring costs.
Ryan, you have a comment?
I did, I just wanted to make, make sure that I'm clear or close to anybody else if I can, if I'm watching Facebook. If you, if your estimate or your projection for the merger is fifty-eight, sixty thousand dollars for extra funds, whatever, you know, on the compass. And you're gonna take that one eighteen, if I remember the numbers right, the one eighteen fund, convert it to a one twenty seven fund where it can be commedible amongst the, the departments that are being merged under the umbrella of a one. And am I clear that that fifty-eight or sixty thousand dollars that it takes to make that merger will then be funded by that one twenty seven fund and not reflected in property taxes or sales taxes as people seem to figure so out?
As it sits right now, there should be enough, if you take all of those, you take the, the one eighteen for the ambulance service funds, the fire department out of the one oh one, the rescue squad out of the one oh one. And there's also a small amount, it's like four, and it could, if I'm wrong, it's around four thousand dollars, and the one eleven for fire protection. You take all those out, put them into one twenty seven, there should be enough fund balance to cover this amount. That we will have a deficit in this next budget year, but you can pull from fund balance and cover that.
But, you know, maybe I misunderstood, did I not hear that the ambulance service has a four hundred thousand dollar account now or roughly? Because it is a.
Six hundred potentially, sorry.
Six, six hundred thousand? So it's a, because it's a revenue generating department as opposed to?
Well, it's not, it doesn't strictly generate all its own revenues, otherwise it'd be an enterprise fund. It still gets five hundred thousand dollars approximately in tax money. And the rest, it gets another amount that it gets in providing services.
But if you do the one twenty seven fund, you would have some six hundred thousand dollars plus being put into a fund that could fund the merger and the additional equipment, correct?
Yes, it should, since you rolled them all into that one twenty seven fund, you should be able to use that fund balance to pay for any additional. You wouldn't have to go back and do a one oh one draw, a one oh one fund draw, that's my anticipation that you wouldn't have to do that.
Ken?
Yes, if y'all would allow me, I'd like to give my opinion, hopefully I have at least some knowledge in this. Where I hear y'all talking about build a building, expand a building years down the road. I'd like to challenge you to look around at other agencies that have one organizational structure, yet have equipment scattered in different locations and see how that's working out for them. Uh, while I understand, and you're correct, in wanting to decrease response times, increase garbage, increase personnel. I can tell you that by doing that, there's a great probability that not only will you not decrease response times, you will increase them, and I mean increase them dramatically. In fact, in some instances, you may not even get the proper apparatus on the scene by scattering them around the county, which is part of my issue with this when I said if you're gonna do it, do it right. I can tell you there's an agency close to us that has apparatus stationed at a different facility from where its volunteers are at. And that apparatus has been as much as twenty minutes late to a call. I'm not gonna tell you who that organization is or what it is, it'd be up to you to find out, but twenty minutes late to a call when the life is in danger is not decreasing response times or helping anything. I would urge you to consider the building as part of a necessary part of this merger to make it logistically correct. Not that I'm saying don't do it, don't merge, I'm not saying that, I'm saying to be logistically correct. You probably need to figure at least part of that into it, in my opinion.
Mr. Ross?
You said by not having the building, the apparatus be scattered throughout the county would probably increase response time?
Yes, sir.
Is not the apparatus scattered throughout the county right now?
The fire department responds to the fire hall for fire trucks, rescue responds to the rescue squad building for rescue trucks. We've heard talk about moving a tanker here, a brush truck there, because it won't all fit in one building.
Right.
We all become one organization as firemen, where do we go?
You wanna put it in one building, it's utopia, yes.
But where do we go, if there's a car crash, what apparatus is necessary?
Can you tell me?
That's my point, you'd have to have at least a fire engine, at least an extrication truck, are those both gonna be in that, in that fire hall? So that being the case, what equipment do you take out of that fire hall? If was the van, the van's how we get our air bottles, if there's a structural fire, I gotta have the van, who goes and gets the van and where's it at? If we all go to the fire hall, who gets the right piece of equipment? I'm saying that it can't be worked out, what I'm saying is, it's happened in other agencies and organizations and it's not worked yet. And like I said, twenty minutes late to a call.
Our, our, uh, two facilities are, are not happening.
Yes, sir, minute and fifty-four seconds, two minutes time.
The response time, there's, if they're that close together, what, what them to get or how's that, you know? But you're only gonna have somebody in the room who said nine to four, is what it says in the order. If the option one, that the emergency services are beginning, in the ordinance that we have, it says from seven, nine, to four.
Seven people will be there, there's always an ambulance.
So you can have seven?
You could have, if they all were there. So I mean, it happens, you also have the ambulance with the cross-trained firefighters and EMS, you know, one twenty seven. You could have directors and the deputy chiefs all there from seven to four during the hours of data you're talking about.
Lou, I wanted to give Mr. King some information here, budget finance meeting. I was thinking for sure it was three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we first put into the ambulance fund when we separated the one eighteen. And, and, and balance that we have currently, right, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty, that was the increase.
How much of that is tax money if I get every year, don't they get five hundred, nine?
No, we're just, I'm just talking about the ending balance that we have at the moment from what we had at six twenty seven.
Each of them are getting tax money.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
This is all come about really from CCA corporations moved in. Matt's not here, but he can tell you that the reason his monies are growing year by year is because CCA plays a greater part of their bill. Mary, please say, Mary, you can tell me. I've heard Matt say that on different occasions. I can remember when we struggled to even keep the ambulance on the road, hooked off to thirty-five, forty year ago. I can remember when Anthony was running the ambulance, said, not over here. They didn't want it too long, and then Hartsfield took it back over and we run it for a while. Then we hired somebody down in, what county was that? I can't remember the county, but they come in here and run the ambulance service for seventy-eight thousand dollars.
They allowed a waiver link, waiver.
That's right, that's what it was. They saved this county a ton of money and all of a sudden they pull that. So it's been up and down and up and down and up and down, but now it's, it's climbing the hill, which is great. Brian, you have another comment?
Yeah, we're waiting, I'll give you a brief, but I'm not, I'm not insinuating that it's free because it's in that account. It's all taxpayer money, everything that's generated is taxpayer money.
No, it ain't.
With the, with the exception of what the, the prison pays, but it's gonna cost, I guess.
The ambulance is generating, that's not tax money.
Right, but I guess that, I guess it can be argued that that offsets the five hundred that you give them every year out of tax money. But regardless, it's six hundred, they have this number, but I'm not insinuating that it's free. I guess I was just trying to make the point or understand for sure that that, whatever this merger will cost, whatever that number turns out to be, does not necessarily automatically injure reflects into rates taxes. It's money that is already out there and allocated and just being distributed in a limited fashion, correct?
Correct, well, Ian, you have a comment?
Now, I was just gonna say, if there was a deal that passed, like it's like this, and that volunteer fire departments could start getting grants for equipment and training, it starts in two thousand, two thousand one, I think that.
They've been grants accepted many times at every one, before long.
But if we merge it, then we, we could be able to get that, we could kind of.
This would be, would be more likely.
Better luck if I'm.
David, you had your hands up?
Another two, we also had another private company there, just called the ambulance service. We end up getting rid of our fire trucks and they come in with a low bid, thirty-three years later they went with a real high bid and caught us without, we didn't have, we had to turn around and buy equipment. But we didn't wanna pay, and that cost us a bunch of money, taxpayer money.
No more comments, we're done.
No more comments, if it merges, we still have a volunteer fire department, correct?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm correcting the question. We have a.
I hope you're a level better for it.
We're not sure we're gonna, I mean, I hope all volunteer states you are. It's still a volunteer fire.
Any more comments, Mr. Lee?
So basically, what we've been hearing is nine thousand dollars, it's not nine thousand, you gotta think about the, 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 the numbers that you give us. I mean, it's not just gonna be straight nine thousand dollars, it's a way of, way of making, it's gonna be additional maintenance.
Thirty-seven funds?
Play on that, that's a, that's a, but I mean, overall, you have to maintain what you have.
So you got some, some. So blame, 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 it's usually the blame time you want, any other comments?
On what you're saying is accurate, you call, the, the committee had talked about nine thousand dollars. And that was up at the scenario of just the EMS, extra, extra time. Now, Ma- the mayor added to that after his meeting by saying, hey, we're gonna want additional help from the rescue people, extend, increase that number, which is really a good thing, to be honest with you, it's a good idea. But that was not originally in the conversation that we had with, you know, and that's a, that's actually not a reoccurring cause for these extra sizes. It will be to a degree because we talked about rotating the equipment on the ancients, there is a capacity.
Ian?
So if we merge them, we're still gonna have a volunteer fire department and the volunteers that respond to calls are still gonna get their thirty dollars per call. But the ambulance people that are there, they're gonna get paid if they're regular hours of work. And so that's gonna increase.
Mr. Dick?
At the time it goes by, wondering, wondering if they can, if they can be able to hire full-time fire.
I hope we get a better safety report than we do right now. Mayor told you what our deficit was for this year a while ago, did everybody hear that?
Yeah, that was a thing.
Any other comments on this, we need to move on. I, if you will, go to budget amendments, I think, uh, Miss Amy gave you a new sheet. You have your new sheet in front of you. We'll start with the urban service fund, one nineteen, one eleven, dash, oh two F B, streetscape budget. The budget committee was here and heard this a while ago, but Larry, you probably will relay this again to the rest of the committees that are here, or members that are here. Can I come down in my lawyer's report?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Come, I'm sorry, I forgot you did.
I thought maybe I was doing it for me.
I forgot you did, come. Are there any questions about that? In order to have the Street Escape Project, we're gonna have to guarantee them that if the project doesn't come in under bid, that we're gonna, we will pay them twenty-five thousand two hundred seventy-eight one dollars. Yes, Ken?
Do you not know the total figure contribution for the Street Escape Project altogether?
It's still there. It didn't go away.
No, I mean, how much we agreed the first time, 'cause I know, we don't agree to this. It goes completely.
Right.
Let me look through my paperwork. I think I brought something that made the rest of it.
I don't remember the exact figure, but it's pretty healthy, so. They said because of rising costs and things, that we have to guarantee them a little more money. But if we don't put this out, then we're gonna lose it all. Miss Amy?
So, our part is the way we set up the project. Currently, we have budgeted one hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. This is my, my, my twenty-seven thousand seven.
So, you have twenty-five thousand two hundred, twenty-five three seventy-eight. Okay, great. Everyone understand that? We don't commit to this forty-five thousand two seventy-eight, well, it's a whole thing. That's what we boiled down, right there.
Excuse me, Mr. Trump. I sent this in an email earlier this week when Mr. Waiter, Chris Johnson, probably didn't see it. I don't know that you got it. So, I hear that, I'm gonna miss it, kinda have a, a very good one to start with. It's hard for the disturbing, Mr. Chairman. I'm done, I'm just, we're gonna get copies from the members who didn't have email accounts, you know, just so, like, make sure they get a copy. I don't have anything further, Mr. Questions? No, I'm just waiting for Mr. Taylor to come back. I just want to apologize for disrupting, for the disruption.
Everybody aware of that now, you know what the figure is? We gotta commit to spending forty-five thousand two hundred seventy-eight one dollars if we're gonna get the Street Scare. And, you know, it's, it could be less, it could be more. The project has not been built out yet. Is that not right, Brandon? Now, let's move on to the Ambulance Service Fund, twenty nineteen, one eighteen, oh-three F B, overtime pay, for forty thousand dollars. It's estimate twenty in, uh, uh, May and twenty in June. That's the forty thousand. By the way, these, uh, budget amendments were approved by the budget finance committee tonight. So, I need you to know that. Now, we got entered Department of Transfers and General Fund. We got fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars of the year-end, uh, entries. But we, presumably, may be more. Yes, man, you got your hand up?
I'm sorry, go ahead, back. Is Mr. Ryan gonna be here to explain this overtime? I, I'm...
I don't know.
I just, I have a question. Is that on top, you know, their budget for last year for their overtime was two hundred and fifteen thousand?
Well, I understand that they didn't have enough in the budget. I mean, you relate to that.
So, they, the forty thousand will be added to the two hundred and fifteen thousand? Or have they already spent the two hundred and fifteen thousand in overtime?
They're knocking on the door, and then what it wants?
And so, they're gonna need an additional forty thousand? But then, like, had four hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars in just regular pay? Are they severely showing pain? I mean, it seems like a lot of overtime.
No, it's, it's part of, if I may speak on that, 'cause I was near both years ago when we were first, we, we had a time in which we were looking at ambulance services and why is it costing us? And it's kind of the nature of that business to where the person works twenty-four hour shifts. They work three of those twenty-four hour shifts. After a certain, after forty-seven dollars hours, it automatically picks the overtime. So, in the nature of this business, the ambulance service, that's part of what they... It's almost like you can't get around it, because of the way that, because... A lot of people that work here, the ambulance service here for twenty-four hours, they might work somewhere else, and knowing, 'cause I know, 'cause I was like, my God, overtime pay, it's not like a normal job where, oh, I work an extra hours therefore to get overtime pay. It's built into the system. And I didn't like that either, when I worked there.
And then, I mean, if you merge these departments, you're gonna have those people working on the pay. Isn't that a little crazy?
No, because they're already blocked, it's not gonna change that anymore, because they're all, that system's built that way. It's, if Matt was here, he'd probably explain it better. Like, a person might have the block for two days on week number one. They might work three days week number two, and, and week draws, etc. And so, one week, that person's gonna get more overtime pay. It's, it's kind of crazy how it's been.
Ken, you have a comment?
Yeah, it's a forty-eight seventy-two hour week. Every pay period's forty-eight seventy-two. So, they've actually got forty hours overtime. But, I will say this in their defense, I don't know still this way, 'cause I don't know what their pay per hour is now, but that used to be why their pay per hour was extremely low, because we knew they made their money in overtime. I don't know what, uh, it used to be eleven for an E M D and twelve for a paramedic, which is terrible, and I know it's went up since then, but I don't think it went up to where it should be, mostly because they know they're getting forty hours overtime every pay period. So, it is built into it.
And actually, we'll talk about what you mean, so I'll go. I talked to Steve Cross about this, and he said, if you be working together, you know that there's a tax code that will allow the county, the county chose to do it, to reduce the amount of overtime monies that we would pay them, because they are merged. You may not wanna do that, because it hurt them. I mean, you might not, and I may go away, I don't wanna do this. You could, so, if there were a cost, if you wanted to just be on here, cost savings, if you do it, and I said, I don't know, we wanna touch that. And he go, well, it's not gonna cost you more, but it's the same as money if you wanted to do it. So, I just wanted to know, it's out there. I hate to even mention it, but because it hurt, we wouldn't wanna do that.
They may work here for twenty-four hours, and they don't pick out the most, twenty-four hours.
Or go left and work just to make sure that business too.
I'm good on that. Uh, let's go to one-on-one General Fund, twenty nineteen, one-on-one dash twenty, year-end cleanup, uh, right now, it's fifteen one thirty-five. It may be more by week of Monday night. Is that right, Ian? Next one? Next one? Next one, yes. Any questions on that? All right, your Homeland Security Grant, twenty nineteen, one-on-one, twenty-one, eighteen hundred and thirty-three dollars. U M A other equipment, uh, purpose appropriated, two thousand sixteen Homeland Security Grant funded, received on May the sixth, two thousand nineteen. Any questions on that? Are you good on that? Cleaning service, uh, twenty nineteen, one-on-one, dash twenty-two, five thousand. Did most of the year, what the mayor said about that? Did everybody hear that? I know the budget finance, man, I'm just wondering about the other group. They hired a cleaning group that's actually doing it cheaper than, uh, what we were doing it for. And this is for the rest of the year only. Is that not right, Ian? So, they're just making the rest of this year.
Does that, there, that contract come up, or we do that contract for next year with them?
The contract expires June thirtieth, at eleven fifty-nine P P. I'm sure it does not go into the next fiscal year. That would be part of the budget process. If the commission feels, wants to fund it at this versus hiring somebody to do it, at that time, we would be executing a contract for the next fiscal year.
Contract versus employee?
Yeah, we're saving, uh, we're saving a few hundred dollars. Admittedly, it's not much, but we're also getting two individuals for the process. A little bit cheaper than what we're paying for one. The mayor, cleaning service, here, okay, in here in Trappa County. I don't remember their first names, to neither Mr. and Mrs. Rowland, so I...
Let's give it a doubt to two county employees, or two county residents, I should say.
Yeah, they actually were able, they should be able to let some of their clients go that were a little bit further towards Nashville, or be more inside the county.
We move on? Twenty nineteen, one eleven, one-on-one, year-end cleanup service, approved by the church. Two hundred dollars. Any questions on that? We move on? Solid Waste Fund, twenty nineteen, one sixteen, oh-three, uh, thirty-eight hundred. Any questions on that? Here comes a good one. Highway Fund, twenty nineteen, one thirty-one, oh-four F B, forty-three thousand four hundred. It's, uh, she's got it all down there for you to look at. There it is, right there. Now, again, we're not spending money to just transfer it, clean it up. Any comments on that? I guess not. Uh, we did have some, uh, public deliveries, Seaton Gross, Anderson Johnson. Sarah Stover, Michelle Oswald, Reese Moss. That's the five that we have right now. Could have more, that's what we got now. Any questions? Yes?
Most in general.
And the most in general, by Mr. Walsh, who said, by somebody, Gary Clarity, all in place to say aye. Go home.
I think Steve was talking about, you know, three seventeen?
No. No one do that thing. Feel sore from laughing? A couple days later, work it out. Just fuck with it, it'll work.
I don't want their own.
I mean, I think it's up to the twins.
It's going up. I'd like to get your media, but I can't do that. I saw media, I mean, I read. I mean, I can't, this guy did it three in his year, and they sent a personal bill to their nurse home, like, fourteen dollars and something dollars. As soon as we, as soon as we passed the, they, they charged, we didn't have their call out.
He tells you the deficit, now, too.
Depending on what kind of fire it is, which truck I use, it's always a four person.